We're expecting Kevin?
Yes, we are.
Leanne, you going to text him? Please?
I'm on it.
Thank you. All right, well, welcome. It's 7:01 on Tuesday, March 16th, and I want to call to order this special meeting of the Ferndale School Board. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you will join me in standing and reciting the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't think you can still hear me.
Yeah, we can.
Okay, my computer is just screwball. That's why I'm having some problems. So give me just a second. My personal IT support is on its way. So as soon as you put up the flag, it went away. Oh, that all I do is just sit there? Okay, wow. That was incredibly difficult. Very difficult. All right, so the next item, 2.01, is the adoption of the agenda, and since, once again, tonight's special meeting has one item on the agenda, it should be pretty straightforward. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll move to approve, adopt, whatever the agenda has written.
All right, it's been moved to adopt the agenda as written. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All right, opposed? All right, so the only topic on our agenda tonight is the selection of an interim superintendent to fill the gap between when Dr. Quinn retires and our new superintendent comes on board to fill the position. So we're going to do this in two parts. So the first part is a public meeting, and we're going to discuss some of the pros and cons, as well as attributes of what we're looking for in an interim superintendent. And so I want us to be thinking about that. Before we get into that, I just wanted to recap that last week, when we met, we had decided that we would not conduct a search for superintendent before July 1st, when Dr. Quinn is slated to retire. Primary reason behind that was timing, and it's just, it's a short window, and we felt that if we used or had an interim superintendent for a period of time, then we could conduct in the fall, late fall, a full search and and really have a chance to take a measured approach to selection of the new superintendent. We're also hopeful that by that point, perhaps, we'll be able to have significant input from the community, as well as the teachers and all the people on the staff. We're hoping we'll be able to have some in-person meetings. We obviously don't know yet, but that was, that was our goal. And so that's where we are for tonight. I will say that last week, I think there was some confusion, and I'm going to take responsibility for that. I think that I made some assumptions about what the board might be leaning towards, and so we had some discussions that really didn't focus on where we needed to be, and so we weren't prepared to have last week. So really, this week, we're circling back, and we want to take time and discuss the pros and cons of an interim superintendent. The options really are, do we want to hire, or appoint, rather, because the board does have the right to appoint. We can appoint a superintendent from an internal group, or internal candidates, or we can do a search and look for someone outside of our district. And so that's really what I want us to talk about tonight and look at those options. Yes, Leanne?
So Andrew, I guess I just want to clarify. You said the pros and cons of hiring an interim. I think we're past, in my mind, we're past the pros and cons of hiring an interim, but we were going to talk about, my understanding was, we were going to talk about, what are we looking for? What do we need in that interim?
Well, that's correct. It is that, but it's also, I think, the discussion will circle around internal versus external. And so pros and cons of internal, external. So I think there will be some, some discussion about that and an opportunity for folks to state how they're feeling. There are no predetermined decisions at this point by any means, and so it's, it's really a chance for the board to openly discuss pros and cons of, as I said, internal versus external, and then talk about the attributes that we're looking for in an interim superintendent.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I wasn't hearing internal versus external for some reason.
Yeah, well, we haven't ruled, ruled one in or out, and so I think that is a decision we may come to tonight. So that's, that's an opportunity that we have. So as you know, Leanne and I have reached out to, I reached out to Larry Francois at the ESD. Leanne has talked to Tim, I always say his name wrong. Is it? Last name, Tim's last name?
Gar Chow.
Gar Chow, thank you for information on that. And so we, we know what some, when we've talked about some of the issues around what we can do there, but if we have questions, we can further discuss the pros and cons of search firms versus appointments. So that's really where we are. I want us to have a public discussion, and then after, after we've had our public discussion, the board, just the board, the five board members, will go into an executive session to have further discussions around possibly individuals or any personnel concerns that we have. And then if there are any decisions to be made, those decisions will be made in the open public meeting. We'll reconvene after the executive session, and if there are motions to be considered, we will, at that point, entertain those motions and take a vote. And so we'll see how we are by the end of the night, if we're ready to make any decisions. I've also asked, I asked Linda and John if they would poll the executive team, and so, and ask them for their view of the attributes, because of course, an interim superintendent is going to be, is going to have an impact on our executive team, and it's going to, of course, change possibly some of the workings that they're doing and, and have an impact on their day-to-day, and so we want to be very cognizant of that. And so at some point in our discussion, John's going to share with us those, those thoughts. And then Kelly, were you, Kelly Larrabee, were you going to take, were you going to do a whiteboard for us, or was that?
I think Fay is prepared to do that, but I'm happy.
Fay is prepared to do that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Fay. My mistake.
Yep, tell me when you want me to share my screen, and I will share my screen and take notes.
Okay. So I think the first thing we should, well, what I'm thinking is, we should talk first about the attributes of what we're really looking for in an interim. And so I'm going to open up to the board first, and Fay's going to keep track of our comments so that we can refer to them later tonight or at the next meeting on the 30th, if we'd need to.
Andrew, can you see my screen now?
We can.
Can I start, like, attribute?
Absolutely.
Um, strong community relations during this, that year. We will be running another levy, since this one's just a two-year levy, so we'll need somebody who's strong as far as those communications. And then also just bringing kids back in school and re-establishing all those connections with the school community, whether it be with teachers and students, students and students, teachers and teachers, what have you. But I think somebody who can really communicate well.
Will someone clarify the levy timeline for me, because we do this in November?
And then we, we approved the $2.50 one, the one that failed, the night that I was sworn in. So that was in November. And that was November 2019.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, the one we just approved for two years, we did it November of this past year of 2020, right?
That's, that's when the voters voted on it, but as far as when the school board decides what levy they are going to run, that would be this summer to, if we were going to run it in February of next year, which is when schools typically do do it.
Yeah, because we approved 21, 22, and so we'd have to rerun one in 22 to collect in 23.
Correct. I think that is correct.
I'm not going to be the interim superintendent, so I don't have to totally understand that, but I'm just, two years from last, I understand we'd be starting the campaign and talking about it. I guess it's the decision on, is it a February? If, if we decide to run it in February, and I know this is not what we're here for, is it the February before the November that we would have run it?
Yeah, it'd be February 22.
Has to be, Leanne.
Okay.
We'll be talking about that this summer.
And so I think we would want someone who has a firm understanding of levy election and operations.
I think we need a good communicator.
I think it was was in an email that I think we all received the other day, that somebody who has a strong focus on education, because while we're talking about money stuff here, we are here to teach kids, so somebody who really can keep the focus on education, since we'll have a lot of transition back into school.
Someone who has superintendent credentials or is the requirement on a job description, what does it say?
I don't think you're required to have superintendent credentials. Most applicants do, but it's not a requirement.
Really? Anybody can apply?
Yes. I didn't, Jesse, I didn't have them when I started.
I should have applied.
You still can. You might have to step down from school board.
I'm just kidding. That's interesting to know, though.
Yeah, we hired Linda knowing she was in the process of getting that credential, but she didn't have it yet.
Yeah, well, I know being a principal, you have to have teacher's credentials, right?
Yes.
And then, then superintendent, I was assuming they have to have credentials for that as well, are working on it.
Nope.
Oh. No to me.
Seattle School District hired a general once.
Is that right?
General, yeah.
Wow, that's amazing. Someone with I don't know, working well with others.
Yeah, that's totally necessary.
In a, in an interim situation, I would think we'd want somebody with experience.
I think we would want to have somebody who can show that they are comfortable with delegating and having other people in charge of large product, projects. Like building our high school, I don't necessarily know, think I would want an interim person coming in and deciding they're going to change things up, or for the most part, a lot of our systems, we don't want them changed up. So we want somebody who can trust the team that we have to continue doing what they've been doing well.
I really like that, Melinda. Thank you. I was trying to figure out how to say it.
How about somebody who's not afraid of asking for help? You know, because we don't know everything when you get in a new position and you want to work with everybody. How about know the culture?
Yeah, I think that's very important.
Knowing the culture and also not being afraid to ask if you don't. I'm just assuming, yeah.
So mine is sort of like a pro and con, internal versus external, but us knowing the history of the district and what's going on now.
Well, I would put respect on there in a two-way mode, respect for what is going on and what's been happening, but also somebody who can merit the respect of the teachers, the community, and such that way.
I would almost want to avoid somebody who came in with big, grand ideas.
I would want to avoid someone who came in with big, grand ideas.
Yeah, we have enough stuff on our plate this year. We don't need.
Yeah, it's, it's also that knowing that we're hiring a superintendent, you, you, we don't want to go through a lot of change this year and then hire a superintendent and go through a lot of change. It's, it's too much turmoil. You know, we, we, you know, I think what we want is someone who's comfortable coming in and and I think I, I hate to say managing the status quo, but keeping us steady and focused on what we need to do this next year until we get our superintendent. Obviously, we want them to take care of things that happen, but we, we also want them to be comfortable that we're not asking them to come up and, and blow up our district.
I would think that there's a lot of, and Linda, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of administrative things that the superintendent needs to keep track that are getting done. So somebody who's very organized can kind of pick up the ball and run with it.
You've seen my notebook. I have. Yeah.
I think that goes along, I mean, there's a lot of change that is being forced upon us by COVID, by the new high school, by new rules, new regulations, you know. We, we don't want them to, we don't want a person that comes in and is totally status quo, that they aren't going to recognize, hey, there's, there's an issue here we need to address, but at the same time, like you said, we don't want somebody who's going to just add a whole nother level of, of change and
Yeah.
you know, topsy-turvy-ness. There's already enough of that, just with stuff we can't control.
Well, and it's a bit like what Linda says, but she doesn't want school to be one more problem for students. We don't want an interim superintendent to be one more problem for our administrative team and the principals and the teachers.
And the school board.
Kong has his hand up, Andrew.
Oh, oh, I see you, Kong. Yes.
Um, for me, I think that someone who filled in for the superintendent should have humility and also fast to adapt to things.
Would you guys like to hear from John at this point, and then think about other things that you want to add, or do you have others that you want to add to this list now?
The only, I guess the only thing I add, I would add is, I think our intention, although I guess we can't totally rule it out, but our intention is that the interim is indeed the interim, and that we are not planning to hire the interim as the superintendent.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Because, well, we're going, because we're going to go through the process, right, of the search, so I guess they would have the
I would say, hey, I would say may not be planning to hire, because you don't know if that interim person is going to apply for the position of superintendent.
Right, that's, if they may, they may decide to apply after they've done it, think it's the best thing they've ever done, or but there's no, there's no direct line
Of no guarantee.
Being the superintendent.
Yeah, there's no guarantee.
Hey, Andrew, before we hear from John, can you repeat who the, who the audience he polled was?
John?
Yeah.
You want to talk about who you polled?
If we're ready to go there.
Yeah, I spoke with the executive team. And so it's, it was, it was five of us. Before I start, I want to say thank you. Thank you for, for taking our input and giving it whatever weight you feel is, is important. And the other thing we want you to know before I begin is, you know, this is a decision that's solely yours, and we, we know and respect that. And we're going to support any decision that you make wholeheartedly for the, the best interest of our, of our staff, student, and community. So we know you'll make the best decision you can, and we will, we will support that. That being said, I don't know how much you need to hear from us, because honestly, as I listen to you guys talk, I, I heard many, many of the same thing repeated. We, we talked about somebody that is highly knowledgeable about where we are, the strengths and the needs of the district. We talked about somebody that was well-known to our current, current Ferndale staff, and so did you. We talked a lot about what you were talking about, the maintaining the important work that we're doing, the construction project, the governance plans that join our work together, the COVID reopening plans. And not just that they're not going to come up with new plans, but also somebody that we wouldn't have to train on those things. We recognize that this is a one-year position, maybe even a little bit less than one-year position. And to spend half of that time training or learning in that, I think would be a big disservice to the, the district. We also recognize that we're in a, in a difficult budget situation coming out of the, the failed levy with the smaller levy passage. We think that knowledge there is going to be very important. And that levy campaign, somebody that's, has been there, done that with that, it's just too important for us to not get that, that right. We took a lot of time talking about the, the, the team that the superintendent leads, being our team, and you know, we, there's been a lot of change there. Three years ago, I came on, two years ago, Kelly, and then this year Fay came on. And frankly, it's, it's really difficult. We know that in two years, or sorry, in a year, year and a half, there's going to be another big change with a, with a new leader. We don't think it's in the best interest of the district with everything going on and the variability our team has seen for, to, to have another large, large change. So we would be advocating for somebody that knows the, the system, the team well, coming in. Another thing we talked about, and you guys kind of touched on it there at the end, we believe that the community needs to know that their, their input was heard and valued when, when you hire a new person to be the superintendent. That's our long-term solution. We feel like if you were to name an interim and then, and you have appointed that person, and then in a year's time, you go through a selection process and come out with exactly the same person. I think it would be very difficult in our community to convince them that you had gone through an entire process and come to that decision. It makes the person, even if they're not necessarily favored, that they appear to be a favorite from the beginning, because they were appointed by the same people that end up hiring them. If it was a whole different committee and a whole different situation, I think that's different. But we really felt like if you are going to appoint someone and then hire some of the same person, you, you have an appearance of of an unequal playing field there.
John?
Yeah.
Being the HR person, is it legal for us to appoint an interim and say you cannot apply for the full? Is that
No.
Yes. You can make it a criteria, yes. You can, you can decide that you're going to hire someone who doesn't want to be a candidate.
But is that, is that just on trusting them? I mean, I, it seems like in America, you can apply for whatever you want, but that would be legal for us to say you cannot apply if you are the interim?
That don't sound fair to me. If they want to apply, they can apply.
And, and our comments frankly weren't about if they could or if it was legal, more the, being in touch with the community, we really feel like there would be the perception, whether or not that was accurate at all. There would be the perception, if you've already appointed somebody, and then you choose somebody after a process, the same person, we think it, it looks like there was favoritism there. That's up to you, but really, you know, you guys hit on the same things that we hit on. We had a long conversation, and I don't think that anything that you're saying is inconsistent with, with what we were, would hope you would say. But again, we will support anybody that you, that you appoint, and, and we thank you for the opportunity to give, to give input. That was very much appreciated.
I'd like to highlight what John said about, and I don't know if the words actually got in there, but policy governance. We do have a different system than the majority of the school districts. And I think something was in there about getting people up to speed. If we have someone who doesn't understand our policy governance, it is going to be an extra challenge. I think Linda has made policy governance look as easy as it possibly could be, and that in reality, it's not easy. So that's just something that I think is important for us to keep in mind.
And Leanne, that was a specific concern of ours, because it is such a huge part of the work that we do, that to teach somebody that during a, during a time we're trying to do everything else would be a very large lift.
Well, thank you, John, and thank the exec team for their input. We really appreciate that. It's been very helpful to hear.
Can I add something else?
Sure.
Um, I think somebody who's chosen to be interim should be willing to learn the cultures of the surrounding area, like Lummi, for instance, so they know that, you know, some of the kids that are coming in, as well as other cultures. Be willing to learn them if they don't know them and be open about it, you know? Because I know our culture has Because I know our culture has a lot to teach. Still, and, and
And I think all, all these things, when we go to do our superintendent search, we're just going to take this list with us, right? I mean, a lot of these things apply, a few of them don't, but a lot of them do.
Yeah. I just want to make sure it's somebody that, you know, who comes forward and says, I do know this, or I don't know this, and whatever. Makes the, you know, levels of playing field.
Okay. I, I think I would have to, you know, one of the things that John and the admin team mentioned that I think is important is that, you know, this interim position is basically a year or less, at least in what we're thinking. And we've already pruned our admin team back because of budget cuts and such. And so I think that somebody coming in with already having some knowledge of the district is going to be crucial, just because there's so many other things have to keep up with or to know about. That if the admin team is having to get them up to speed on this, and get them up to speed on this, and get them up to speed on this, I think it's really going to cut into what time they have, just in general, to get their, their work done, which is going to pull away from education, it's going to pull away from our other programs, going to pull away from a lot of things.
Other comments or thoughts to add to the list? It's a great list, and Leanne, you're absolutely correct. This will be our working list largely for a new superintendent.
Well, and just piggybacking off of what Kevin just said, all the things going on. We're building a high school. And just like Linda has made policy governance look easy, I think this administration team has made building a high school look pretty darn easy from the board's perspective.
Agreed.
I know we got, we got a letter a couple of days ago from a lady. She had mentioned that she was concerned about having the superintendent come from the classroom. So she was suggesting that, or not suggesting, but, you know, reminding us it should be somebody who knows or has been in the classroom before. I don't know. I always thought that there was a stair step that you had to take. You know, you principal, teachers and principals, then superintendent, so you know what's going on in the classroom. I don't know.
I, I think again, if, if we're looking at this as, as the, the attributes for an interim, depending on how we end up going, I, I think with the depth that we have on our executive team, that we can have an interim superintendent who's a strong leader and is very knowledgeable about education, but maybe hasn't taught before. I, I don't see that as a tripping point for an interim, depending on the candidate. Because again, we're, we're looking for someone to help us get from Linda's departure to the arrival of the superintendent. And certainly our superintendent will need to have, you know, a strong educational background, you know, stronger than just about anyone on the team. So that will be certainly something. But, but I think in an interim role, depending on the candidate and the exec team, there's some give and take there for what we need for 10 months.
Well, those 10 months, if you think of the things going on though, we have three huge projects that in any other year would be the big project. We've got guilt in school, running a levy, and bringing kids back into, back into normalcy, whatever normalcy is going to be.
Yeah.
And of course, you want somebody who can do all of that, but we might have to prioritize a little bit. You know, what's going to be most important out of those three things to us? And you can make an argument for every single one of them, I think.
Absolutely. And, but again, I, I think that the depth of our exec team gives us some flexibility there.
Yeah.
I, I think that's where it's going to be important to have an interim who doesn't have a mission, but is willing to work with the people that are in place to, you know, give the insight of what the district has already gone through and what they're dealing with and where we need, you know, where we're, we are on track for going.
I know I, I said I wasn't going to say anything, but I just, I do, I just have to make one comment about why I chose now as the right time to retire. And that is that I think there is, are some plans in place that, I, I heard what you said about not bringing somebody in with it on the agenda. But just like building the new high school, we're starting the construction. We're going to break ground this spring. And having lived through that whole process, I know that there's a lot of hard work that's coming, but the planning is done. Is in place, the budget is in place. We've done the really hard decision-making to get a design that, that I, there have been points that I didn't think was going to be possible with the budget that we had. And now it's working the plan. The same a little bit, Melinda, with what you said about getting kids back in school. It was important for me to get everybody back a bit. That first big step was really hard. So now, you know, we have a plan, we continue to work that plan. The same with the governance, you know, I think your new superintendent, I remember when Greg Baker was hired in Bellingham, they had, had already switched to policy governance, and he didn't necessarily know about it, but he came in there willing to learn it. And we've, I think we've got it enough in place. So a lot of these things, I, I think you're going to have nine or 10 months of working the plans that we've put in place. And then you can bring someone in with a vision, a big, you know, because you're going to want somebody with, who can take everything to the next level.
Yeah, exactly.
Good typing there.
Yeah, kudos to Fay. I would, I would never volunteer to type in front of everybody like that.
I was super impressed.
Well, thanks.
All have our strengths, and when Andrew wanted to scribe, we all elected Fay. Kelly had a moment of panic when you asked her to do it.
Sorry, I, I knew it was going to be Fay, and I just misspoke, so. And it was also fun, it was also fun to watch Kelly's face get even paler.
We make a good team.
Other things to add to this before we move on to further discussion? All right, well Fay, this is great. Absolutely save that, so we'll keep that as a working document. So then I think the next part, keeping those, I mean, the list is, is more extensive than, than I imagined even. And so it's a lot of things to keep in our, our heads as we have this discussion. But keeping those things in mind, I think the next point of discussion really is to talk about an interim versus, I mean, not an interim, an internal versus external candidate. And I'm not talking about specific candidates. I'm just talking about an internal interim superintendent versus an external interim superintendent. And
Andrew, do you want me to take notes on that, this section too? I can do.
Because it, it makes a lot of fun. And be helpful, absolutely.
Let me just, I think I got the right one. The right screen?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm back, okay.
Well, I think one of the biggest pluses for an internal person would be their knowledge of what's going on in the district.
I think a negative of having an internal person would be the domino effect of backfilling.
Well, the other, the other negative is the, we've always done it this way, you know, scenario.
And, you know, I agree with that, and I, and I realize that the risk of sounding like maintain the status quo and all that, that's why I said I hate saying that. But, but again, for the next, you know, 10 months or so that we would have an interim, we're really looking for someone to help us achieve all of those things that we listed, like the high school, because it's going to be underway, it's going to be getting kids back into the classroom. It's going, there, nothing is going to be status quo, really. But we're also not, I don't think, I, I will say, I don't say we, I will say for me, I don't think the interim role is one to come in and make a lot of changes. That's going to happen perhaps with a superintendent, because a superintendent will have a lot of flexibility about what they, they envision for this, for the district. But the interim is not really that person, I think, that we are expecting to, to come in and, and do, do a lot of changes. Obviously, things will come up, things happen every day that have to be dealt with. But we've got such a, a big list of things, even if we're working on the plans, it's, it's going to take a lot of time and, and focus to, to expedite those plans. So that's just my thought.
There's, you know, somebody could come in and kind of be like fresh eyes on stuff. They don't necessarily have to change everything. But just having a, a, somebody who's external, who has just a, a different way of looking at it, just seeing things from a new perspective. Don't change anything, but you can tell us like, gosh, where I came from, we did it this way. Be like, that's nice to know, thank you.
Internal plus, I like what John said a while back about grow your own. They know, you know, the, the curriculum or whatever, budget, they know what needs to be done and not done. They know, you know, the community. Every, I, the way I think, everybody looks for promotion. And I think it would be a promotion from, for somebody internally.
And while I agree with that relative to a superintendent's role, personally, I don't see the interim as something where we want to promote someone who doesn't have the majority of the skills that we listed. I think
Yeah.
That, that would be a disservice to, to the district.
Yeah, if they have this opportunity to apply for the superintendent, like nine, 10 million other people out there, and just so happens, you know, becomes down to one and two. Maybe they're number one, but the second person is the one who's more qualified, and they get that position. That's where I'm looking at the fairness.
Well, yeah, I'm not sure if you're talking about superintendent versus interim.
Some experience, no, it might apply for a job next year for somewhere else. And they have that experience.
Yeah, that is a question of if somebody take, if somebody internally takes on the interim role, but then we're not thinking we want that person to become our future superintendent permanently.
Well, we could tell them right from the start that it's not a guarantee.
Yeah.
You know, that they know what they're getting themselves into.
Well, I think
Not again, that they don't get, they're not guaranteed the superintendent position, just because they, you know, have interim.
Yeah. So this is one of those, I think, decision points we're going to have to make because we have the policy OE2 for succession. And I realize it's not a direct, it, it doesn't specifically apply to this. In my mind, it's not a huge stretch. If, I mean, if Linda were incapacitated at this point, we wouldn't be really having these discussions because we have a policy that we would follow for someone to step in when, when she's not able to do the duties. So I, I think one of the decision points for us is, you know, do we exercise as a board our ability to appoint someone? Or do we want to have a process whereby people apply? Because those are very, two very different processes. And then if we decide to go external, then there's also, in my mind, a, a negative aspect of the external candidate is the cost of recruitment for a relatively short period of time.
Well, just by looking at the executive team, we have a lot of experienced people, good people that could fill that position for a short term.
Understood. And, and absolutely, as I've said many times, we have great depth on the exec team. But for the board, we're going to have to make a decision whether, as to whether we are going to appoint by following our succession policy, even, even if you want to have a discussion about whether it directly applies or not. I think it, it can, but we would have to make a decision, either we're, we're not going to adhere to that or follow that policy, or let that policy guide us, if that's a better choice of words.
I think, I think
And, and we're going to
Give the people a choice. I think we should give the staff a choice, who wants to apply, who made the requirement.
Yeah, here's what I think, though, Jesse, I think the board has a responsibility to make the best decision it can for the district about an interim superintendent. And it may be a decision of the board that appointing someone based on policy is the best for the district. Now, we may decide as a board, we're not going to do that, and we're going to open it up for, for whatever reason we might. But we've got to, at some point, rule one in and one out, and then move on from there. But those are two choices that we have to resolve as we go through this discussion.
Well, and like you said, Andrew, if we, you know, there's the cost involved with an external, you know, searching for an external person, there's also the unknown. With an internal person, we have a track record, we know how they interact with staff members, the rest of our team. An external person, we, we aren't going to know that nearly as well. And again, for a short-term position, how that person interacts and works with the people that are already in place is a crucial role in my mind, or crucial factor in my mind.
So the, the cost that I'm relating to, based on information I've gotten, is in the neighborhood of adding $10,000 to the cost of our superintendent search. So if we hired a firm, which we most likely would do to help us find an interim external candidate, the cost would be about $10,000 more than just searching for a superintendent. So that's just another piece of information for us to, to be aware of.
Andrew, do some districts just advertise a position rather than going through a search firm for an external interim?
My understanding is that yes, some districts do. The challenge is this, and what you get with the search firm, if you're doing that, is they do a lot of the vetting and, and the screening that goes on in the background so that we end up with, you know, a, a few really qualified candidates as opposed to the five of us sorting through however many applications we might get and determining which ones we want to interview. I mean, but, but yes, we could put out an ad, the majority of districts, as I understand it, typically use search firms. And I think most search firms And I think most search firms, you know, they have a a, a pool of people that they can match to district size and operations and things of that nature. And, and that's of course what you're paying them money for.
I would like to see, if it's internal, I would like to see a list of people who are interested in in the interim and
Well, again, I want to circle, excuse, excuse, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I'm going to circle back. I think we need to decide as a board. Are we going to do an open internal search or do we want to appoint following what's laid out in our succession policy? And I, I think
Like to do an internal search myself.
Well, again, I think that's going to have to be something that is made as a motion. And then the board has to vote on what they want to do.
Okay, when do we get to that point?
Well, we're in the open public meeting. We can be at that point. If, if that's, if someone has a motion they want to make. But I think that there maybe need to be further discussion though about, and, and, and open discussion about the the pop, the plan, succession plan that we have in place without going into, and this is not about individuals.
Well, our succession plan, Andrew, is an individual.
Well, it's also a position. And so if we're going to talk about individuals, that's a discussion for the executive session because that's personnel. But if we're talking about the succession plan, which designates an assistant superintendent. You know, maybe we want to go into an executive session and have further conversation, but this is not the place for us to discuss individuals. And so that's not a discussion we're going to have.
About fairness and getting a list of people who are interested myself.
I guess the question with the list of people that are interested is then how and who vets that list and determines who the best
Thought the board did.
Okay, and and I'm, I'm fine if we want to, if the board votes to go in that direction. That's the direction we will go. I will again, go back to say, in my mind, the board is charged with coming up with the best person that we can identify for an interim superintendent who has those lists of things that are on this, this long list of experience and expertise that we're looking for.
So I, Andrew.
Yes.
I think it sounds like while we have not voted on it, we have pretty much eliminated the idea of going with an external search.
And so we, we haven't had a motion to go either way, so I don't think we can. What's that?
Is that a vote?
We have qualified.
It can be a consensus. You can come to, you can make a consensus decision about an internal versus
Versus external.
Okay.
I don't think we've really talked about whether we want internal or external.
Right.
Some people I think really want one way and
Yeah.
might want a different way, but I don't think we have a consensus.
And I think, again, you know, I, I don't want to. I obviously have my own thoughts about this, but I want this to be an open discussion, but I just don't want us to start down a path. Where, whereas I think I think we would need to vote on how we do the internal. Now, Linda, do you, are you saying we can have a consensus about internal versus ex? I mean, internal, open or internal appointed? I think that needs to be a vote myself, but.
Yeah, if you, well, and if you can't come to consensus, then you're going to need to vote on external versus internal as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think we should, we should deal with the internal versus external first.
Yeah, yeah. Totally fine with that.
I can't reach it.
What's that? Jesse, are you there?
It's her technical.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll wait for her to rejoin us. I just feel like these are, we're going to chip away at some of the, we have too many options and we're going to have to start narrowing it down by eliminating some of the options that we have. And then we can start to focus on one or the other thing. But right now we've got, I think, three options. We ought to at least get it down to two. And then have further discussion about that.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, great. We were just saying that and Kevin had brought up that, that he really feels like we need to, one, determine external versus internal. And then we focus on what type of internal search we would want to do. And so
Like I said, though, I'm in favor of a internal. I, I don't know what everybody else is thinking.
Do we have a consensus on an internal versus external process?
I am in favor of external, I believe, but I do think I'm in the minority and I will go with the consensus if that's. I mean, if I'm one against four, I'm not going to spend hours trying to.
I think too, a lot of it is, has to do with the timeline. You know, how soon do we have to do this or?
Well, I think that, that for, for having the interim in place, we have more time than if we were trying to get a permanent superintendent in place by mid to late summer. So I, I think this gives us we have a little more flexibility with the internal. I mean, I'm sorry, with the interim, not the, with the interim superintendent than we do if we were deciding to search for a permanent superintendent.
I think actually
And Linda.
I want to give one argument for an external. Do have a lot of good plans in place. And if we had somebody who has superintendent experience who's just here to spaceship a little bit for a year and has a strong team behind them who is working this plan. I think we would have a, a large group to choose from. Um, I also think that as far as internal wise, if we were to have an internal list, like open to internal candidates. Then does that put? Does that take people off the list because they want to be the permanent later? Or does that give the person who does interim, are we going to lose that person later because they want to move to a superintendent somewhere else?
I think that's their choice. We can't determine that. You know, that's, that, those are good questions.
We do want to retain good people for as long as we can. I mean, it is their choice. It's totally the choice, always, but I want to retain our good people for as long as we can. And I guess I, I see it as if you want the plans to be worked the way we have them intended for this next year. Then all of those strong people who are working those plans right now have them do it and have some retired superintendent person who's done this all before, knows where to sign the papers, that sort of thing. And will just sit in the desk for a while and help us out and let everybody do all the work around us, around them. Not totally. That's what I imagine.
Melinda, I, I, I absolutely hear you. When I look at that list, though, of what we just generated. To me, it says internal. It doesn't say external. There's too many things on there that it's an internal person would already know. I, I, and the vetting process to get that external person that you describe, which sounds pretty ideal. Would be a bit of a crapshoot, I think.
Do you think we have the strength to run a strong levy and maybe move out of a dollar 50?
I, Linda Shaker, I mean, I, I, I would, I guess, I, I maybe I'm just dreaming, but I would like to think that an internal known candidate interim would have more impact on our community than an interim that's going to be gone in 10 months.
Yeah.
That's just my, that's my thought.
Going for the internal and the internal and then the external for the superintendent of wide search. I think there's a, a few people that are interested in doing interim and maybe there's not, but I would like to see a list myself.
I, I think there's some maybe inherent challenges to generating a list. Or not generating a list, but pulling people to find out if they're interested, because what if we look at the list and say, yeah, we're going to go the other way. That's a very negative message, message to send anybody who put their name on that list.
Well, just given what Melinda said, it could be anybody. And then you just told me it could be me.
It could be.
If they, if, if those people are
The only way to generate a li, only way to generate a list is to ask people to identify themselves.
No, is to advertise a position, interim position.
Yeah, she's, so we had the three options of external, internal with our policy or an internal applicants, basically.
Understood. So let's, let's circle back and, and just focus now on the question of external. So Melinda, you've said you're in favor of an external.
Yeah.
We need to come to consensus as to what, whether external is, is going to be one of our viable options or not.
Well, I can make a motion for that and you guys could vote it down and then we can move on.
Yes, you could.
Okay, I will make a motion for us to do an external search for an interim superintendent.
All right, there's been a motion for us to do an external search for an interim superintendent. All right, all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Okay, sorry, motion didn't carry. All right. External candidate is currently off the table.
Thank you.
So now
And thank you for doing it with a smile. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I wasn't going, I wasn't getting anywhere. So apparently my convincing skills are.
Well, no, I, I mean, I think you have very valid points about that. I just think it's a challenge any way we go.
Yeah.
It's going to be a challenge anyway.
Yeah, there isn't a right or wrong answer.
Exactly.
And then when we say in, uh, external for superintendent, that means anybody could apply, right?
Well, when we open it up, when we open up the superintendent's search. Then anyone that meets the basic criteria that will be attached to the summary that is sent out could apply, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So at this point, then we are focusing on internal. And the discussion from points are to look at the internal from the succession planning that we have in place versus internal open to anyone in the district who might so apply.
Well, and, and to that, to, to start off that discussion, I guess, you know, my point of view would be that somebody that applied for the, or that was the interim primarily because of the, the things that John mentioned as far as the community perception. I, I would have a hard, the person who was interim in my mind would have a hard time getting my vote for being the the permanent or the, the full superintendent, just because of the fact that it, it's going to look like, well, yeah, right, the board did this, but they already had a plan in place because they put this person in. And oh, surprise, surprise, they ended up being the, the candidate. And so I think it, it puts that person at an unfair advantage or an, in an unfair position. And I think it puts the board in a position of our decision being questioned, which, you know, it probably already will be. But that just is one more factor towards it. So, you know, I, I would have to say I'm in favor of if somebody wants to be interim, great, but I would want somebody who wasn't inclined to apply for the full-time or the permanent position or whatever you, the non-interim position.
I think we could put out a, um, this disclaimer too, saying that, you know, it's not a guarantee that they, uh, uh, if they apply that they, you know, get this, might get this position automatically. That's not, that's not being fair. And, um, they should know that right up front.
Okay. Okay, we need to, we need to circle back to the basic question of deciding, are we going to search for our internal by following the succession policy that we have versus opening it up to whoever might want to apply. Then once we've made that decision, we can talk about the other issues. But I think at this point, we really have to decide sort of which way are we going to go with the interim internal candidates. And so again, looking for either a motion or consensus, we have to decide we're going to open it up for applications or we're going to act as, as part of the purview of the board and appoint someone based on our policy.
I think if we appoint somebody, that the community will have something to say about that. Rather than letting people, rather than letting people apply and then we make the choice. I don't think, uh, uh, I really don't think if we appoint somebody, it's not going to be favorable.
Well, I would, I would challenge that by just saying it's, it's our stated policy. We have a succession policy. I mean, it's, it's our policy. It's, it's not arbitrary. It's our policy. We've got it in writing that if Linda's not here to do her duty, that this person can step in and be the superintendent. And again, I recognize that the policy is not specifically written about retirement, but at the same time, I don't think it's a huge stretch to apply the same thing.
If the policy was not written for retirement, it was written for if she was incapacitated, then it is
That's what I was saying.
It is not the policy for the interim.
I'm, I'm just saying, I think that you can apply that policy in this situation. If the rest of the board doesn't think that, then we don't, then we won't. But I'm just saying, I think we can.
I think if we, like Jesse is saying, if you just appoint somebody, the community perception of that, if we say we're using that policy, which is really not that policy and using it in that way, that's something the community would say.
Well, I mean, we're going to get comments either way we do it. So that's, that's fine.
I would like to be
As I said, I, I'm, my personal opinion, and I don't think that's unfair. Jesse, I don't think it's unfair for us to appoint based on our known policy, but this is a board decision. So if, if everyone, that's the majority rather feels that we want to have an interim selection process where anyone can apply and then we vet the applicants and decide who it's going to be. That's what we'll do. It's just my, this is my opinion. But, but it's the board decision about how we will approach this.
Well, and it seems like, um, when we talk about opening it up to a diff, to another internal candidate that doesn't follow the, the protocol set, set out in that policy. We will be making a choice. I mean, either way, we're making a choice. We're making a choice of who comes forward or we're making a choice to follow our policy. And I guess I, I don't want folks to think that this is an offer. I, I, Jesse, you talked about like advancement and professional development. You didn't quite use those words, but but it is, I don't think it's in the best interest of the district to think of this position as a training ground for a superintendent. This position is interim to get us from one, from where we are now to when we have our new superintendent.
Yeah, well, I think the superintendent position is exactly that, is a separate position. We will not hire anybody who is not qualified. We will not hire anybody who is not qualified for that position. And it may, maybe or may not be this person. We don't know that until we give them a chance.
Well, here's the thing.
I, I.
Again, my opinion on this, what we need is an interim superintendent who is already well-versed in what we're doing in Ferndale and can hit the ground running. This is not a position where we want to have to spend time helping someone get up to speed, learn how to be a superinten- this is, this is a position where we really don't want to have to do a lot of training. We don't want that. This isn't like Linda said, I mean, like Leanne said, this, this isn't a trial, isn't a tryout. I mean, this is, this is where we need someone to step in, continue the plans we have in place and get us through the ten or so months between Linda's departure and the arrival of the new superintendent. And so it's, it's, it's not a training ground. It needs to be someone who can hit the ground running. And so that's where.
Well, you're gonna have your, remember what you told us is you're gonna have Linda there for few months to help whoever is gonna be there.
Well, that's.
Not a training, that's not a training position. I know that. But you're not gonna pick, I mean, if you get a list of people, you're not gonna pick the least favorite. You're gonna pick the best. Right?
So, you know, you, I just, I don't know if this is relevant or not, but you, you have the complete control to appoint. Two districts recently have appointed their permanent superintendents. Nooksec Valley, the, the superintendent is retiring and they they're an internal candidate. It's not an interim. They appointed him to be their superintendent. I know you don't want to do that, but the same happened in Lake Stephens. The superintendent, Amy Beth, retiring, and they have appointed an internal person. So you have complete control to appoint an interim, you can appoint a superintendent. I know you don't want to do that, but, um, that, that is a choice that is, that you can make.
I, I'm wondering if we could step into executive session for a few minutes and then come back out and further and have, have this discussion a little bit further. It's.
Yeah, somebody sent me the link so I don't get lost.
Wait, what happened?
We just took the screen off. Can you not? Andrew?
I got it. I got it. Yeah. It, it's, something's weird with my computer. So I sent you guys, I sent the five board members, or the four other board members, a link to a Zoom meeting. For some reason with this link from my computer, I had to give you a passcode. So look at your email that I sent you just before the meeting started. There's a Zoom link and a passcode. And so join me on that meeting and then we will come back into the general session, uh, to either make decisions or adjourn the meeting.
Andrew, do you want the executive team members to stay?
No, uh, well, Faye, yeah. Faye has to stay, but.
No, I mean.
No, I, I, I think it's okay.
I can type, not as good as Faye, but I can type.
Yeah, I, I think you guys have, have done your duty tonight.
I had a, an email from Kelly at six thirty-two, but I don't have an email from you, Andrew.
At six forty-three, he sent. I got one from him. Oh, it's to your Comcast account, Melinda. Oh, okay. I will forward. Oh, I see it now.
Jesse, do you see the link?
Yeah, I do.
And Kevin?
Yeah, I'm good.
So we'll leave this meeting, go into executive session, then we'll come back and either have more discussion or adjourn the meeting. How about that?
Okay.
All right, thanks. And thank you, exec team.
Yeah, thank you.
Great job. Am I in the right meeting? I don't think I am.
If we, let's look at what we said. You should be.
And it's one, two, three, four, right?
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Let's see. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, so we're back in our regular meeting. We've had some very heartfelt discussions and I think we've heard lots of opinions and thoughts and have appreciated all the comments and things that have been said. It's a very challenging time for the district and we all want what's best for the district and for our community. So if there are any motions that anyone would like to make, I will entertain those at this time.
So I will move not based on our policy, but based on the list that we generated tonight of what we're looking for in an interim superintendent to appoint Mark Dibok to the interim superintendent position.
So it has been moved to appoint Mark Dibok as the interim superintendent, not based on policy, not based on our succession policy, but based on skill set. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, opposed? Okay, so the motion carries with a vote of four to one that we will appoint Mark Dibok as the interim superintendent and during which time we will continue to search for a full-time superintendent to start, I guess, in the summer of 2022. So.
So Andrew, Andrew, will you be contacting Mark after this meeting?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Yes, I will. So there are no other items for us to discuss. And again, I appreciate everyone's comments and conversations. It's been really good to at least talk at this level about what our needs are in the district. And as I said, now we have a working list of some attributes for a full-time superintendent. So thank you all, and I will see you again on the 30th.
Thank you. Bye.